I think he's in the middle of a big remodel. Yeah, are you guys good? You ready? Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. So the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, school board meeting, uh, is officially called to order. Uh, Michelle is not here, uh, Nick's not here, and Eddie's not here, but we have a quorum, so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward and, and go through the agenda here. First thing we're gonna do, uh, we don't have a, a student of the month, so we're gonna do the pledge, and I'm gonna lead it. So if you don't mind standing up.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so this is, uh, the time of the year that we do our board reorganization as far as, uh, officers. We are going to be, Michelle is going to be moving out. She's been president now for two years. And she, uh, she's on vacation, so she is, she's no longer gonna be president.
She's gone.
She's gone, yeah. Uh, hopefully she'll be back next month, so, um, I would entertain, uh, a motion for how we're gonna move forward.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to reorganize the officers with Randy Hudson being president, Nick, Mr. Nick Emerson as vice president, and Ms. Debbie Creek as the secretary.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion, uh, for me to move up into the president's role, um, Nick to move up into the vice president's role, and Debbie to move into the secretary's role. Um, I don't suppose there's any discussion between you two, is there?
We have time for debate.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Y'all are stuck with me for the next couple of years, so this is my second go-around. Um, I was cleaning out my, uh, some of my drawers at the office, and I happened upon a whole bunch of agendas. I, I, I think it was like six foot tall of agendas that I, uh, came across. And I came across the one from where I was very first elected, October ninth of two thousand and seven. So I'm gonna keep that one, but I, I was kinda flipping through it, and I thought it was just kinda interesting. Uh, back then, we were getting an update on requesting to close Emma Avenue to, um, add on to Springdale High School. We were having our dedication ceremony for Shaw and Monitor Elementary, just like fifteen years ago. Um, it was just interesting to go back and, and, uh, and look at, Doug Sprouse was our president of our board back then. I think he's been mayor ever since. So it's pretty cool stuff. Uh, hopefully I can do it. This is my second go-around as president. Hopefully I will improve on what I did last time, so. I am gonna go to the next item. Agenda, uh, for this meeting, do we have any changes, additions, subtractions?
Sure. I made a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Creek and a second by Mr. Bell to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next thing is our consent agenda. There are about seven items that are listed there in our consent agenda. Are any of those items, is there anything that needs to be discussed about those items at all? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve them.
I do have one question on the, um, Springdale teacher administrator recruitment in the kitchen plan. I'll be completely transparent, I agree to all of it, but it, it's really not about recruiting, it's about exit interviews. Do we do those?
Not, we have not in the past, uh, to the level that, uh, maybe is expected.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we have, I don't have an expectation. I was more curious than anything else.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times we'll have conversations with people. They'll come, they'll either talk to the principals, if it's a teacher, if it's a principal, they come talk to us. And so I wouldn't classify it as technically an interview, and you'll have a rating system.
And there's really no question there, if people are leaving other than retirement.
Correct, right. A lot of times we don't even see the, or those who send something, and they're already gone, so. But this is new. The Department of Education changed their requirements typically in, in, in October fifteenth. And it's bounced between September fifteenth and October fifteenth, and it's just been something that's been a practice that we've done. And reported our number of minorities, what they are, what locations, uh, where they are as far as in leadership and in, in our school. And now there is this new requirement, and so this is part of that new.
It's a requirement.
We could pull that out and work.
No more questions, that was a counter for our question, keep my interest to ask that question.
Sure.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
Did he make a motion?
He made a motion. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. OMB and a, a second, uh, by Mrs. Creek. Is there any more discussion, anything else? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Dr. Cleveland.
I'd like to introduce Ms., Dr. Shawna Lyons. I know, I thought I saw her back there. She's gonna have a report on our twenty-first CCLC program. You all know Dr. Lyons, he's.
Hi, Dr. Cleveland and the board. The vision for the grants department, um, in Springdale schools is to provide the Springdale educational community with information on grant availability as well as grant writing expertise to further educational opportunities for our students. Um, and with that tonight, yes, I do have the out-of-school time, specifically after school, um, with our Twenty-One Century Community Learning Grants. Um, we currently have eight of these, and they are at Archer, Springdale High School, Helen Tyson Middle School, J.O. Kelly, Sonora Middle School, Sonora Elementary, Turnbo, and Monitor. And then next year, we are pleased to announce that we'll be adding Walker Elementary to that list. Um, in partnership with SOAR, which was formerly Camp War Eagle, we currently have one Twenty-One CCLC site, and that is Parson Hills. Next year, um, we'll, we will be adding Bayari, um, and George Elementary. So that'll give us a total of twelve sites being served under the Twenty-One CCLC grant. Um, in addition, the Arkansas Out-of-School Network has funding, uh, for a program similar to Twenty-One CCLC. It's usually just a little smaller. Twenty-One CCLC serves, uh, between eighty and one hundred students every day after school, and this is about forty or fifty students every day out of school. Um, this year we had three sites. We had Walker Elementary, uh, Tyson Elementary, and Harbor High School. Um, next year, we're looking at writing for Westwood Elementary, Elmdale Elementary, Tyson Elementary, and Harbor, so adding four. Um, in addition, the, um, SOAR, which was formerly Camp War Eagle, has one of these grants, and that's for Jones Elementary. Um, and so that gives us four total for the Arkansas Out-of-School Network. So I put in a link in this document, just if you want to see, um, I've just asked principals and site designees to just say what they have going on after school in terms of, um, either grants or school-funded opportunities for students. Yes?
Yearly renewable, do we have to renew them every year, or is it automatic?
Um, so it used to be a five-year grant. It is now shifted to a three-year grant. And so we've created kind of a spreadsheet so that we can make sure, and the State Department right now is only allowing two per district per year. So we've created a spreadsheet so that we can make sure, um, that our cycle will just hit two a year, so we won't have someone left out, so. Yep. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Two per year per district is not really even across the state. Way fewer schools.
Right.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Ms. Stacy Plumley, our GT coordinator.
Hi there, I'm Stacy Plumley. I'm the Director of Gifted Services here in Springdale, and also the Assistant Director of Learner Support. And this is Ms. Ashley Tarvin. She is at Don Tyson School of Innovation, and she is our gifted, one of our gifted facilitators there. And, um, we've been working together, um, this year on something that's pretty, um, pretty special, and we're pretty passionate about, that we really want to share, and, and the kickoff, um, with you. And if you could advance maybe one slide, I'll, there you go. I, um, I have a ten-year-old and I have an eight-year-old, and I have been in Springdale schools. In fact, I graduated from Springdale. Um, I've been in Springdale, um, as a teacher, as an administrator, um, for twenty-plus years, and, um, taking this position has, in getting more involved in the, in secondary education, I, um, started to look at, at our students with high potential, or our gifted students, um, in a different way. I thought, how, how are we continuing to support them, um, in secondary education and even beyond? Um, something that, um, when I was, um, actually interviewing a lot of our national merit finalists, I, um, kept asking, so how did you get here? What, what was your journey? How, how did, how did we help? And that opened my eyes to this new, I'm, I'm a college graduate, um, but this new world of, um, invisible rules, um, that it takes to get into college now. Um, in fact, there are even people that can be hired to help families, um, get their students to college. And that world has changed so much from when I went to college, and now that I have a ten-year-old and an eight-year-old, um, that journey and that, what we're gonna have to, um, take on as parents to make sure that if they have that dream to get to college, that we're doing everything that we can. Um, I was recently reading, um, this, this actual, the statement up here that said, "In terms of college readiness, eighth grade is now the new eleventh grade." That we have to start thinking about what opportunities are out there, what colleges, what scholarships, what, we, we have to start lining these things up for kids when they're in eighth grade. And, um, sometimes it can even be earlier than that. So that just led us to what can we do, um, as educators, as, um, the, why we do what we do to make sure we're supporting our students if they have that dream to get to college, especially to a certain college. And we are gonna be partnering with the Walton Family Foundation, and, um, we started talking to them in October and had multiple, multiple meetings, um, and came up with what's called the Year of Learning Plan, where we're going to invite about forty families ranging from outgoing fourth graders to outgoing eighth graders, um, to see where do we need to, in Springdale, start that process of building their capacity, if that is their dream, to get their, their kids to college. Um, we're gonna be starting this summer, our kickoff is this summer, and, um, we're gonna be doing lots of one-on-one interviews, um, just to see what they know, what they don't know, what families, um, what kind of, um, very specific needs they might have. And then we're gonna actually go and tour some colleges and have them, have parents there to, um, experience what it could be like on a college campus and, and, um, have them really, have that dream really be, um, right at their fingertips. So, um, we're gonna start off with thirty-nine thousand, a little over thirty-nine thousand, with our forty families, and we're gonna basically be doing an action research project and seeing, um, what information we can gather over the year in hopes to write an even larger grant, um, for an extended period of time to involve more families, more students, get more kids on campuses, um, so they can really, if that's their dream, or didn't even know that they could dream that, that they can see the possibilities out there.
What kind of criteria do you use to, I mean, forty kids and us twenty-two thousand?
Tough, exactly. It's tough, and we've really, um, our, our criteria basically was, um, we had to start somewhere. We just started looking at different, um, test scores, whether the ACT Aspire, MAP scores. Um, we're gonna be sending out, um, invitations to families, um, from, um, all over Springdale. We're not targeting.
Very diverse with elementary schools, with male schools.
Very much, yes.
So it's, um, a population, a sub-population from every category you could think of, but we use their scores from ACT Aspire map.
Exactly. We really want to, and even some recommendations from administrators and school counselors and GT facilitators. But we want to make sure if we, if it truly is an action research project, that we're getting, um, a great slice of what Springdale looks like, so again, we know how best to support them.
And we're going into the community, into their churches, community centers, organizations, to educate them on what the grant's about, so that they can understand. Part of the funding is to help feed them, um, get their whole families there, if they have siblings. Yes, transportation and help in all those different ways, so we're not excluding people in the summer and on the weekends when we have these meetings.
We, we want to eliminate all barriers. We want to eliminate all barriers when it comes to the grant, so we can, um, make sure we're getting the right kind of information, as much information we can, to make sure that we're supporting them, um, from this point on. Um, but then eliminating barriers to get their kids to college, if that's their dream and that's the child's dream, we wanna get them there.
So is this, in essence, a trial, kind of trial run with the hopes of.
Yes, sir.
Four or five times that amount for the next.
Yes, sir, you got it. So we're really, we wanted to come in, we, we could have started off large and big, and, but we didn't want to, um, be using a, a large amount of money and make those mistakes along the way and not be as efficient, um, as we could. So by starting small, collecting that, that data, we will be able to then hopefully design a program from the get-go, um, that can evolve.
Training as well, um, but after meeting with parents, their anxiety and stress comes from the financial burden of college. So we're hoping to help ease students' minds, parents' minds, because many of our students qualify with their test scores, with being first generation, with their major that they'd like, you know, architecture and coding and things like that. So it's refreshing to be able to comfort those parents and say, "We can help you." And the few students that, even at Don Tyson, I've met with when I called U of A or wherever, they were like, "You're, you're a cash cow. You're getting us all the money." The money is there for them, they're just not aware of the, uh, the opportunities that are provided. So it's exciting to make the connection for students and parents to know that money will pay. I mean, some of them will be getting paid to go to school, and their parents wanted them to go to work at eighteen, which is fantastic, but now they see they can make money off attending college, aside from a part-time job. So it's neat for them to become educated on all of the opportunities that are there for them.
It's, it's showing them the dream. It's showing them the dream that they didn't, um, might not even know, um, was even a possibility. And not only showing them the dream and making that available, um, but actually going through and making it possible.
From the application process to the scholarship deadlines, a lot of students aren't aware that that starts this summer before their senior year. And it's first come, first served at many colleges, so if they wait till December, all the deadlines have already passed. So it's just educating parents on these timelines to help them get all the money they need. Um, a lot of them, a lot of students even wanna live local and attend NYAC or University of Arkansas. And so it's a realistic plan for us to help these students have a full ride, and that's the goal, to change the landscape and a cultural shift that they can attend college and have it completely paid for.
Any other questions? We're excited. We're, hopefully this time next year, we'll say where we've even gotten a larger grant and that we're moving forward with even more students and families.
So we started with one fifty that we'll send an invitation to, and then depending on the recipients is how we'll narrow down to the forty of those who are interested.
You don't think you have a problem filling the forty?
No. That's why we started with a larger number of one fifty, um, to see who would like to come to our initial meeting and then educate them on what'll happen throughout the year.
I appreciate you all coming here and the hard work you've put into it so far.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I know.
Thank you.
President, you're Mr. Don L. Apparently read in the newspaper or saw on TV that Springdale hosted a school safety summit, and I have to say that Mr. Don L and his team have really did great job, and so I'll see you out there keeping an attentive, so welcome your confidence.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Um, the first slide is just a kind of review of some services that we're providing this year and what our focus is, removing barriers to students' academic and social success and providing students and families with the need, resources, um, and services with five-star customer service. So I'm excited to say that our counselors are world-class. They're gonna be providing those services next year. We're adding, um, thank you, Dr. Cleveland, for allowing us to add additional providers for next year. And we're gonna be adding some mental health providers for, to make up for the BURL, um, behavioral health piece. And when they exited Arkansas, that left a kind of a void of about four hundred kids that wouldn't be served, so we were able to bring in four additional providers. Uh, I'll thank Ms. Kendra Clay also for going over those MOUs and making that happen. Uh, social workers will continue working with the pantry. The next giveaway is next, uh, Tuesday, and that's also with, uh, big help from Captain Taylor. He's got about seventeen volunteers that are gonna come and work that. So the police department will be there working that with police cars, all that kind of good stuff. It'd be really awesome. Uh, nurses will continue to provide care with empathy and compassion, and also our school-based health clinics will be up and running with our five, um, clinics next year with George Jones, Elmdale, Parson Hills, Rollins, and Rollins, I mean. And then, of course, our medical vans for, uh, medical appointments and for, uh, any type of, um, appointment that they need that has to do with medical, um, pieces. Next slide, please. And then the school safety summit, we were, um, I was pretty blown away with the amount of support that we received from that. Uh, we had over a hundred and twenty attendees from twenty-two different schools and, and one university. We had six vendors there. Um, I can't tell you thank you enough to Joanna Ortiz, who helped me organize that. Also, Mr. Rusty Johnson helped with that as well. And, uh, Arissa Health provided our lunch, which was fantastic, and then, um, Springwoods provided breakfast. I apologize. Vantage Point provided our lunch, and Springwoods, um, provided our breakfast, which was amazing. And if you could play that, there's about a minute and a half video I just wanted you to see of that.
Um, you know, the kids are our future, uh, and we have to do everything that we can to protect them.
So the, the, the purpose of this event is to learn and grow from our collective experiences. At last count, there were twenty-six school districts here, uh, across Arkansas. And so, um, you know, we wanna learn and grow from each other, from our experiences, uh, to keep our students and our community safer.
The biggest thing was the opportunity to collaborate with fellow administrators and safety personnel from across the region. Gave me an opportunity to think about the practices and procedures in my own building, share some of the current ideas that, that we're utilizing, um, that have been successful, and then also gain new ideas, uh, from administrators and safety personnel, um, to implement back in our building for the coming year. As we think about safety, um, there's always more that can be done or can be refined, and so just the chance to collaborate with one another, uh, I think was the biggest takeaway so far.
I think it went really well. I'm excited to see so many different stakeholders coming together to have these conversations. You have law enforcement, classroom teachers, administrators at the building and district levels, and then school board members. Um, and I think it's really cool to see that many different perspectives kind of come together and discuss these topics. We all have a different point of view. We all have different experiences, and bringing them together to collaborate, um, will give us the best options. Damon and his team did a really good job in putting this together, and I'm really proud of Springdale School District for presenting this and, um, kind of being a leader and making sure that all of our students are safe.
Overall, I was very happy with the learning and the success that we had at this event, and we're already looking forward to planning an event again for next year. Those are some pictures there from the event. We had some, uh, Dr. Cheryl May of the Criminal Justice Institute was there doing the keynote address, and then we had some really great presenters as well, um, that, and then people from all over the district. I learned a lot of new little tricks and, uh, tips about things that we could do here in Springdale, and I hope that others learn those as well. Uh, next slide, please. And then the last, but not least, I'd like to thank our amazing community partners that we have, and we have some really great ones to announce tonight. Uh, Walmart, you know, I just, I can't quantify how many thousands of pounds of non-perishable food that they've donated this year alone. It's just amazing. Um, also Samaritan, um, Community Center. We have fifty-six thousand, one hundred and forty snack pants, snack packs that were distributed, uh, this year uh, to students and families, and then also the Northwest Arkansas Food Bank, uh, thousands of food boxes there. And then a new partner, which is Feed the Children, uh, we just had an event with them this last month where they supplied thousands of, uh, food boxes and essential food, um, boxes as well, supply boxes. And then the last slide here is three really, um, great community partners that I'm, I'm uber proud of these three. Um, for awarding, uh, Harvest Foundation awarded a grant of fifteen thousand dollars to buy some materials uh, for the Treehouse Pantry. That'll be used to support students, families in Springdale. And then Tyson Foods, I did the math, we had eight, um, giveaways this year. Each one were around forty thousand pounds. It's over three hundred thousand pounds of frozen protein, protein that were distributed this year alone. Uh, and we are so appreciative of Tyson Foods. And then last but not least, I wanna compliment, uh, Dr. Shawna Lyons for helping with this. We can finally announce, we'll have a formal announcement of this as well, that we were awarded a three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar grant, uh, for the Springdale School District, and it will be used, uh, in large part for, um, material items for the Treehouse Pantry and support for students and families in Springdale. So, absolutely. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask Ms. Audrey Lindley to come to the board, Ms. Sissy Lindley, come to the podium. Yvonne, she didn't know this was gonna happen. She was just gonna be recognized, but.
You're trouble now.
She's the assistant, or she is the principal of Southwest Junior High, and she has been selected to take on a new role, paid for by some categorical and federal funds, and I gotta tell you, the CNN. And I got to tell you, the CNI team is thrilled to have her, and I am too. But I'd like for you to tell them just a little bit about how you see this position and some of the outcomes that you're looking at across the vision.
Well, I'm 100% passionate about instruction and about serving people. And we have a great opportunity to support our administration and our teachers in the building to really look at best practices, best instructional practices, to connect buildings and the great work going on in the buildings when it comes to instruction, and to just build our capacity. I know Dr. Smith has probably mentioned John Hattie and the effect size. And collective teacher efficacy is the number one effect size for teacher growth and student growth. And what that means is, if I believe as an educator that I cause learning, that I make intentional decisions that improve learning for students, then students are going to learn. That's just as simple. But we have to work really hard at figuring out what those best practices are and how they support our students. Because every year, we have a different set of students with different needs. In some years, we have COVID. In some years, we have building COVID. And we just have to learn, always be learners, what's the best practices that's going to connect our students with the best learning we can provide. And so my goal is to just connect the great work in Springdale, the great educators and the great practices, and just help us grow, all of us grow each other, and to support the buildings in that area of what does great instruction look like and how can we get better every day for our students.
I know that your direction to me and our direction is to move the needle academically, to really provide great opportunities for our kids and not only provide the opportunity, but see that the outcome is there. And that looks different. It could be career-bound. It could be college. But all those things, the kids need to be ready. So our effort here is to coach and to motivate and support in whatever area that we need in all schools.
And if we really believe in best practices going on across the nation, Solution Tree does it. A lot of people are doing it. Learning from each other is the best way to support teachers. Like, we have the answers. We have the collective genius. We just need to build those systems so we can learn from each other and learn what those best practices are and what's working with our students in Springdale schools. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I really am excited.
Thank you, Ms. Lindley. I know that was verbal. If you didn't have any, you didn't have any forward knowledge.
No, I have a text saying I wasn't going to speak tonight. Thank you.
I know that we have Ms. Andy Ingram. We all know that Ms. Eds retired. And that's a blessing for her, a part for us, because we all love Ms. Eds. But I have to tell you, that's just another opportunity for another person to step in and grow and lead. I'd like to introduce Ms. Andy Ingram. Is she in the room? There she is. You know, Andy. Speech pathologist by trade in the past, and then now has been an LEA and a leader in our district for quite a while. She's going to be able to take the reins and move it forward. So we thank you. We wanted to recognize you tonight and present you to the board. Thank you. Some of you may know Ms. Amy Schultz. Is she here tonight? There she is. Stand up. You're behind the podium, so I can't see. She's been a longtime nurse over at Bernice Young Elementary School. And we know Ms. Kathy Laundre has retired. Again, left a big hole, but Ms. Schultz is going to do a great job. She was unanimously selected to take this position. And she's soft-spoken, but she has a loud voice, if that makes any sense. And she has great leadership. Thank you for being here, and we just wanted to introduce you to the board.
Thanks.
There's another young man in the room, Mr. Chris Harmon. Can I stand? Mr. Harmon is a longtime Springdale employee. Started as an aide, worked his way through to a teacher, to instructional facilitator, and literally blew us away with his efforts and outcomes of the work that he's been doing at Lakeside. Dr. Shepherd was a genius in his selection, in my view. You don't say that very often about Dr. Shepherd, but he was absolutely genius in his selection of Mr. Harmon to be the new assistant principal to take care of longtime assistant Mr. Kelly Kinnis, who's also retired. You're going to see Chris again. I would imagine that Chris will move his way into the roles of a principal at some point. He could do it today, here. He could do it anywhere. This young man is a bright star and is going to move up in our district. And I'm very proud he's at Lakeside and proud of Dr. Shepherd for his selection. So Mr. Chris Harmon, he may even have some little ones here with him.
I was going to say, we always ask people to introduce their parents. Maybe we could ask you to introduce your kids.
This is Walker and my wife.
Thanks for being here. All right, Mr. Trent Jones, I know is here. We had a lot going on in communications. And Mr. Jones wants to take about two minutes and just talk to you a little bit about it.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Cleveland, Leanne. I have the great honor of reporting some communication updates from the year. It was a great year in communications. Congratulations, everyone. Great job. Great work. You don't want to see a 50-page report on communications? Just kidding. Just kidding. I'll post about it. Just kind of high-level overview here for you all. I did attach our year-end report if you want to do a little deeper dive into the data. But some of this stuff, to me, really stood out that we were really proud of from our team. Four million-plus impressions on our digital platforms. One of the things that we've worked on really hard over the last two years is to ensure that we have synergy amongst platforms and that we're timely, authentic, in multiple languages. All of us know that we have a robust media program. But this was pretty awesome to see 1,100 videos were uploaded to the Springdale Schools YouTube channel this year, 250 live streams. This kind of blows my mind. This is approximate. It's not exact. But right around 600 times, Springdale Schools has been in the media this school year, whether that's direct or indirect in some capacity. And by media, we mean local news, radio, filmmaking, print media, newspaper, et cetera, 600 times. Most people know this about me. We sent 555 emails that we produced internally with 1.3 million opens. And we produced nearly 80 shows from the district level. I thought that was really, really good quality. Here's something interesting to mention with our webmaster this year. We created and modernized 20-plus destination webpages. For example, transportation, the explore page, state required, staff links, et cetera. And we modernized over 60 webpages by scrubbing them, cleaning them up, modernizing them, getting better fluidity functionality. We're working with the CNI team and the district leadership team to really empower communications on the building level. That'll be one of our main goals for next year, is working to empower the four buckets of communication, executive, social, video, and web. We created and implemented and facilitated community partnerships. And I think this is important. We built and sustained consistent content creation in three languages. And to me, the important word there is consistent content creation. It wasn't popcorn. It was consistent. So that happened. And before I wrap up, I just want to say thank you to our team, Mary Jordan, Leslie Orozco, Dustin Mapes, Luis Alfaro, who's downstairs live streaming right now, Omar Gonzalez, Rosanna Anatok, Kaylee Cersei, and Hovita. It is our great pleasure to tell the story of the school district. And we hope that we always make you proud, knowing that we welcome any feedback, any processing that you guys have. And we're thankful to be servants to this community.
What does it mean when you say you created 555 emails? What does that mean?
Oh, isn't that great? Okay, so two years ago, one of my big focuses was internal communication in order to build capacity across. Yeah, so we wanted to build emails to kind of build capacity across buildings. So you know what's going on. So we have a platform called MailChimp, and we have a platform called Smore. And the Smore is like a digital newsletter. So essentially, all that means is, we did one for all the board, right? So like in January, we featured all the board. So we write up a story, take photos, put videos in it, and we share it internally. And the idea is, you break down the silos. You know, so if you're in, say, Monitor, you might learn what's happening in Helen Tyson. Or if you're in Springdale, you might learn what's happening at Central or whatever. And it just kind of ties us all together, help us realize internally that we're one big family, not just an external public relations focus, but an internal capacity building.
So do you monitor the DBRs?
Well, I don't know what DBRs are. Oh, yes, we do know who opens, who subscribes, and unsubscribes. And I'm not saying I scrub that regularly, but I do. Oh, yeah, no, we do. We were able to follow the analytics.
Thanks for the explanation.
Yes, sir.
Have you figured out a way to monetize our YouTube channel yet?
Yes, so we have amazingly wonderful community partners. And so a lot of times, what our community partners will do is they provide funding for our programs. And in return, we put underwriting or sponsorships. You know, so say, for example, you might watch a performing arts center performance by like maybe Central Junior High or somebody. And at the very beginning, it might say, this is brought to you in part by, or whatever. And so we don't normally do the monetization through YouTube through their standard way. We leave that off and we do our own pre-roll. They do some, some, but it's very small amounts of videos. So some of our videos are monetized. Mostly what we do is community partnerships. And we, as we all know this, Damon just proved it. We have great community partners. They really take care of our programs. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland.
Thank you. Communication was, I think, the key that kept us going through the COVID situation. Accurate, timely, and multiple languages.
Thank you. Board, I have two items before you tonight. The first, you'll remember that last month I introduced the idea of the Act 1240 waiver request, specifically seeking waivers for class size and teaching load. You'll recall that our intention on this waiver is very specific instances, mainly at the elementary level with the mid-semester class size overages. We will not eliminate our balance transfers that happen at the beginning of each semester. We wish we could get to a point where that were the case, but we're not there yet. And then at the secondary level, the waiver would allow scheduling conflicts when students need a really particular class that is only offered at a particular time. So the request would be to go 2-over on class size and teaching load. I did link the full waiver document in your agenda. It changed very slightly because between last month and this month, DUCI changed their required form. So I just adapted to their new form so that it doesn't get kicked back to us if you approve it. Again, we will continue to staff all sizes, all classes at the current class size. It will not raise the size that we're looking at. On the licensure, we talked about last month, the very specific instances. A lot of times with CTE courses, much like the program at Don Tyson School of Innovation, allowing qualified industry experts to come in and teach courses. And then there would be a possibility to use it in the context of, excuse me, long-term subs if a licensed candidate were not available. Since we were last before you, we got feedback through the PPC, which then sent feedback requests out to their buildings. That document is included in your agenda. And we tried to address every question that came up. And Dr. Smith also had a in-person meeting with members of the Springdale Education Foundation to address some of their concerns as well. Do you have any questions?
What was their response to that?
I think they understand and they also, I don't want to speak for them, but my understanding is that they understand. They also advocate for teachers and they did that, so. There is a resolution included in your materials that would need to be approved that would authorize us to take that to the State Board of Education to seek their approval.
So generally speaking, on the surface, it really doesn't change the way we are going to operate, but it does give us a little more flexibility in those particular cases where we have to go up to 2-over.
That's correct. That's a good way to sum it up. Yes, that's correct. And I've told, I think I said this last month, and I've said it to a couple of different groups that I've had conversations about these waivers with. I hope that three years down the road, somebody asks the question, hey, did we ever get those waivers? Because it's such a small effect on anybody that widespread, people won't necessarily even know that the waivers exist. But it does give us some flexibility in some places that we've been a little tight.
Board, are there any more questions? If not, there is a, some language here. Is that the June 14, 2022 email? Nope, that's, I can't understand. My bad. Hang on. Where is it at? I saw it earlier. I thought I did. Well, there's, there it is. The waiver request. Would somebody like to make a motion? I can't. It does provide us a great opportunity later with our CTE program that should students be launched into the world of work. Credit. I don't know if you have to give that specific language. I think that just explains them. So you provided a specific request that happened.
There's a resolution included in the agenda. If you, your motion, motion could just be to pass the resolution included in the agenda.
I'll motion to pass the resolution included with the agenda for the Act 1240 waiver request. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mr. OMB to approve the 1240 waiver request. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, thank you. The second item on your agenda is the policy update for this year. It looks really small when you look at it this way. But the Section 4 students was converted over to the ASBA model policies. You know, that's been an ongoing project that we will continue to work on. As we got through this Section 4 at 69 policies, I thought that was probably enough for this year. So this conversion changes our current Springdale policies over to ASBA model policies, but keeping true to Springdale-specific pieces of that. So the actual words of the policies are different. The content and the purpose of the policies is the same. So I did my best to stay true to what the current policies did, but using most of the ASBA model language. So what will happen is these Section 4 policies will replace Section J of the current policies. And then those few I policies listed will be deleted because they're now covered under Section 4. And there's some overlap there. Our current policies have separate sections for students and instruction. And so those will be merged. There's also a policy update to, excuse me, my throat is dry today, DLC that would change the language about mileage reimbursement to a flexible rate that's equal to the current state rate. So if a state rate change happens in the middle of the year, we don't have to come through and do a policy change. Our policy will ebb and flow with whatever the state reimbursement rate is. Do you have any questions?
Will we actually just approve the updates as presented?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the policies as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mr. Bell, to approve the policy updates as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Dr. Cleveland, uh, the first item that I have for you this evening are the proposed 2022-23 salary schedule adjustments. You will see that there's a, uh, link in the agenda that has these, but just to summarize, uh, we are proposing that $1,500 be added to the certified salary schedule. This would bring our beginning salary schedule for a certified teacher with a bachelor's degree and no experience to $50,282. The second proposal is to add 2.5% to the classified salary schedules. Uh, $1,500 compared to the average teacher's salary is approximately 2.5%. So that's where that percentage comes from. And then in addition, to add one experienced step to the classified salary schedules, our certified salary schedules are, um, there are a lot more experienced steps than there are for our classified. So this would, um, add an additional step. Most of our classified schedules then would be at, um, 19 steps. Um, and then finally, I have some specific, or we have some specific examples to bring, or, uh, schedule adjustments to bring to you. Um, we're wanting to simplify some of our schedules. They just have a lot of lanes in them on the classified and just have it make more sense when someone from the outside comes to look at our maintenance schedule, for example. There are, I think, nine lanes, and unless you're on the inside of our district, you don't really know where you would fall. And so we're wanting to, um, eliminate some of those and make it more, make it make more sense to those that prospective employees that would be coming to our salary schedule, or coming to our website to look at our salary schedules. Um, same thing for child nutrition, custodial, and then we are recommending a substantial increase for our deaf education interpreter schedule. We have been unable to find deaf ed interpreters, and so, uh, therefore we have been having to contract out that service. And whenever we have to contract out those services, we pay a much higher rate than if the, if we had our own interpreters. So we're hoping that getting closer to the market, um, will help us be able to bring some more folks in-house, um, to be able to serve us, serve our students. And then the final thing was to, instead of having a director of nursing stipend, to move it to an indexed position, um, and that was once again, so that we could, um, attract candidates and be comparable to our other districts in this area. So I've gone through those quickly, um, but basically, uh, with the environment that we are in at the present time with our economy and the inflation that we are seeing that we haven't seen in some time, uh, we wanted to do all that we could, uh, for our employees. Um, Dr. Cleveland challenged me to do this. As y'all know, property values in Northwest Arkansas are increasing quite a bit these days, so, uh, we are seeing a, an increase in the amount of monies, uh, generated from property taxes. And so that increase, along with the foundation funding increase, will be used to, um, fund these, uh, adjustments. And then I do have to, uh, do a quick shout out. Our assistant superintendents in curriculum have been doing a, a yeoman's work in looking at our master schedules to determine, uh, when we have resignations, if we are able to absorb those positions, and they have been able to help in that regard, and I am very grateful to them because, uh, once again, that, that is really helpful as we, uh, want to reward our employees. So, questions?
I think a motion takes, I think a motion takes, I think a motion takes. That's a little open-ended. I'll go with Debbie's. She made a motion. Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. Bell to approve the salary schedule adjustments for the upcoming 2223 fiscal year. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you. The next, uh, item I have is I would ask you to approve a resolution in order for our district to purchase two parcels located at 108 and 112 North Virginia Street. This is, uh, in the area where we will be having construction with the, uh, new facility for SHS, and we had an opportunity to purchase these properties at less than their market value. They appraised around 275, and we offered 200, and they accepted it. And so, um, be happy to answer any questions, but it just provides us with needed space there in the area of the new facility that we'll be building there.
Is that 200 for both?
200 for both.
Do we have any questions about that? They're right there by the auxiliary gym, right?
That's correct.
And our hope is to try to mimic our work, the way we purchased Central Junior High properties. We're gonna apply to use some additional federal funds in order to do that. Make it some appropriate use funds. They may say no, but if they do say no, at least we will have, have it secured. Kind of squares off our property right there and just nice and clean. Water mitigation is an issue through there as well, and so this would really help get the water away from our kids and our students and, you know, parking and everything else.
Does it square the property, or is there still some, does it square it off, or is there still some?
Oh, there are several buildings along that road.
Still a few more. Still a few more, but it takes a big chunk of it up.
I'm still waiting on Kelly to go get that place over by the mall.
Well, I know, yeah.
Is, um, are we gonna keep them or are we gonna take them down? The plan will be to take those down.
Kind of open it up there.
All right, Board, what do you think?
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the two properties on Virginia Street, 108, 112.
Mm-hmm. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mr. OMB to purchase 108 and 112 North Virginia Street. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Great, thank you. The next item I have for you is the, uh, May 22 financials. Um, you will notice on the revenue report that we are right in line with where we were this time last year. Something that I'm particularly pleased with is that we have hit our budget for our local, uh, property taxes, and so our June settlement will push us over budget, so that's always a good thing. And then on the expenditure side, um, we are slightly, uh, behind in our teacher salary, which is always a good thing, uh, compared to budget, but, uh, operating fund is a little ahead, but overall, we are right in line with where we were this time last year, so I, I feel good about it.
I'm wishing they approved the May 2022 financial statements as presented.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. OMB, a second by Mr. Bell to approve the May 22 financial statements. Uh, all those in favor? Any opposed?
All right, and next we have Mr. White with the construction update.
This young man's been busy. Very busy. Okay, Board, um, I've got a, a few pictures on a lot of our projects. So at Springdale High, we've started our internal demolition of the equipment and, uh, things that we're keeping out of that building. A lot of the fencing, um, the arch, and a lot of stuff that's getting reused, we've removed it from the, from the side. Same thing at the flat building, uh, we've removed everything out of the inside, um, that we want to keep. And then Flint Co. will be setting their job trailer this week, and then the asbestos abatement crew will show up next week, start that process, and then demolition should start right after that. Um, and they will be doing some demolition, um, on the exterior, a lot of the rock that we're gonna reuse, they'll start, um, taking that out to save it. A lot of the flooring inside will, will come out next week, and then the bleachers that are to the north of the flat building, we'll start, uh, taking those down, and, and then we're gonna salvage all of that aluminum bleacher material.
Do both of the buildings have asbestos, or just the old gym?
Uh, both, both of these buildings have some, uh, the, the auxiliary gym has a couple flutes where the old boilers used to be. Uh, the flat building has, uh, black mastic under the tile on the flooring, so they'll have to abate that before they can start the demolition. Um, Central Junior High, um, they've started some of the site work, um, to prepare for the demolition. It has a little bit of asbestos on the exterior, on the roof of the, of the school, um, so they'll have to abate that before they start the actual demolition of the building. But, um, the, the district's maintenance crew went in and we salvaged a lot of the, uh, material inside. Um, we moved all the kitchen equipment into the new temporary kitchen location, and then, um, we've started work on getting utilities into that area in the kitchen. So we've removed the freezer, we relocated it over to Springdale High School, uh, to increase their, uh, capacity. We're actually gonna convert it into a cooler. They needed cooler space, so, uh, we've got that done. Um, that's the inside of the kitchen at Central. So it, it's in the same boat. It's waiting on the, yeah, asbestos abatement, and then the demolition will start on that. Southwest, um, they have started a lot of the site work, so they're working on the, uh, road that will go to the south of the, the football practice field. Um, this is out kind of by where the retention pond will be. So they, they've started that work, and then as far as the demolition, they're pretty much having to wait on the asbestos abatement crew to take the asbestos out of the two-story classroom building. It had black mastic under the tile.
We were aware of all this, right?
Yeah, correct.
Of our cost.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it is. Um, so it's just part of the things that have to happen first before that demolition can start. Um, this is out at Don Tyson School of Innovation. It's the new, uh, driveway that will go out toward Turnbull. This is down on the corner. They run into a little bit of a situation there. We had to do a lift over a, a, a spot where they had put in a bunch of, um, brush, so we had to do a, a lift there with B stone and some Geo mats. Uh, but it's done, and they're working on that. Um, they're set to finish right around the time school starts. So at, uh, the middle school HVAC projects, this is at Helen Tyson. It's the, the units have been set there, and then on the interior, um, they've got the duct sock up, and it's actually running at Helen Tyson. So that's, that's what those duct socks will look like. So we started, uh, Hellstern, they've got the units up on the roof, um, and then they should start the, the duct sock this week, and then they're gonna move right on over to, uh, Sonora Middle and, uh, J L Kelly. And then we're still waiting on about 60 units before we'll be able to go put the units on, on the, the, uh, classroom buildings at J L Kelly and Helen Tyson. So as soon as they show up, they'll go and, and start switching all those units out.
With those ducks that are hanging down there in the gyms, will they be susceptible to any kind of damage from basketballs and soccer balls and stuff?
No, we've got them in a lot of our other, uh, gyms, so they have a metal frame inside and then just a, a fabric sock. So, so they're not, you don't have to worry about damage or anything. Um, and then I have, um, the technology, uh, parking lot. We've got it striped, so they still have to do the landscaping and the dirt work out by the road, but other than that, that project's pretty much complete. And then, um, a week from tomorrow, we're gonna meet with Dusty Graham, and we should have some drawings of George Elementary, and so we'll have a, a better plan on, on that. Um, we have done some, um, drawings and got pricing on replacement costs, and then we've got all that to the insurance company, um, just waiting to see what they say. Is there anything else?
Uh, yeah. Board, I just wanted to give you an update, and Dr. Cleveland's probably been visiting with you individually. Um, as we take bids on these projects, these construction projects, the school district isn't immune to the inflation costs that are happening, so we are seeing increased costs for construction. It's not unique to us, it's, it's happening to all of us, uh, to everyone that's building right now. So we, uh, borrowed X amount of dollars, uh, 97 million to be exact, uh, plus the state partnership dollars, and so we are working with the architects and the construction managers to work on those costs, to get them as close as we can to the amount of funds that we have, uh, that we've borrowed, plus the partnership funding. In the event that we are unable to do there, we would have to use, uh, unobligated building funds, but as you know, there is an end to those dollars, so I just wanted you to be aware, uh, that, that is something that we're dealing with at this time.
We're in conversations with architects and, and construction managers to maybe relook at their fees, because, you know, they understand that as the price goes up, if there's a percentage, when they identify a certain amount of what it should cost, and it goes 20% more, they understand that they really aren't working 20% harder to get 20% more money, so they're working to get that money back down to their budgeted amount with their fees. And so we appreciate that, we haven't really solicited them for that, that's them coming to us and saying, hey, we, we get it, we understand, so we're, we're proud of our partners in this work.
Jeremy, I have a random question. I, I serve on the, the Arkansas School Boards Association, uh, Executive Board, and one of those duties is I have to sit in on the insurance, um, committees and all that stuff that, that goes on, because the Arkansas School Board Association provides insurance for a lot of the districts. Well, just recently, uh, we've had two or three really big losses in some districts and some gyms, because kids have thrown balls and knocked sprinkler heads off of sprinklers and flooded the gym floor and had to replace the floor. And I mentioned when I heard, you know, that we'd had two or three of them, I was like, well, do we not have cages over those sprinkler heads? Never even heard of them. So, and I got thinking, do we have sprinkler heads in ours? And if so, do we have cages on ours? That's really stupid of my, on my part, if we...
Yeah, so several of our schools do have sprinklers in the gyms everywhere. Um, and we do have cages. They, they do make protective cages that go over them. Um, so, so we, we do put the, put the protective cages on those, along with, um, the, um, strobe lights and horns that are in the gym areas, usually we put the cages over those. The exit lights that are over the doors, we put protective cages on those. Full stations usually get an audible, um, protective cover on them, or if a kid pulls that cover, it puts off like a local alarm, so the coach will know, hey, somebody's, either ball hit the cover or somebody's opened the cover, you know, to hopefully not have a, a false alarm.
Well, I assume that you hadn't addressed that stuff, but I just want to make sure my, my bell's covered.
Yeah.
I don't want to have to go down there and tell them how we had a bad loss or something that I hit.
Nope, we've got it, we've got it covered.
We're not with the ASBA.
I know we're not, but still, I'm sure Shannon would find out about it and give me grief over it, so I was just curious.
And next month, we should have a lot more progress as far as the photos go of all the projects. Right now, we're just, we've, we've done a lot, but you can't really see it in the, in the photos, so.
We're on track with SHS, we're on track with Central. I met with Patrick Tenny I did today about funding and where we are, which we told me that we're gonna reduce by a little point for sure, and, uh, we've got some reduction to do. Truth is, Southwest will hopefully behind. Architect is struggling to try to get the speed up, so we're working with them. We had an interview being last week, and it's tough to beat, so.
Which one is...
And, and we are working with them closely, and, and we're working on possible solutions at all of them to try to lower the, lower the cost, you know?
It is what it is.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, S E A.
Good evening and happy summer. My name is Valerie Hanna. I am the elementary board member of the Springdale Education Association, and we made it through one of probably the roughest year, if, if not the toughest year that at least myself personally has had in my teaching career. And we've had many conversations over the last month with our fellow teachers and support staff, and a huge topic that was brought up to us is that we're afraid and we're kind of losing some hope. We're afraid that we're not able to help our students succeed. We're afraid that we are not going to be able to accomplish the things that we're being tasked to do, and we're afraid that no matter what, what we do isn't enough. It is imperative that we feel like we're supported and that we're heard, and we have been encouraged tonight in what we're hearing about coaching and best practices. And I was personally one of the people that got the privilege of meeting with Dr. Smith and Ms. Fink, and I was grateful for that opportunity to be heard. And I have hope that this next year will be a great year of growth for us, and I just hope that we have compassion for those teachers that are still afraid, you know, and that I have hope that our district will continue to listen to our concerns and help us gain that strength back to continue to be the best, you know, district that we can be. And like I said, happy summer. I appreciate all of you. I don't, I didn't really ask a question, so I don't know that I can be like anybody have questions, but, so there is that.
Happy summer to you. Thank you.
Sort of and almost and yes, because I'm still at Westwood right now teaching summer school, but summer school to me is like extra. It's, it's not, it's not, not, it's not like I'm not having a summer vacation. It's more like I'm getting to do what I love the most with, you know, a smaller group of kids and really getting down to it. So, you know, or today, we made salt dough as our STEM activity, and we made starfish, and we've been learning about starfish. So it gets to, it gets to a little touch on the, the funner side of the teaching, so.
I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you, and thank you all.
You know, I, every teacher I've talked to said this was the hardest year ever, so I'm with you in hoping that we can feel better next year.
It's gonna get better.
We appreciate you guys.
It's not even we hope. It's, it's gonna get better.
Good.
So, thank you.
I didn't see a list. Is there a list of signups? Ah, nobody signed up? Okay. Is there anything else? Any committee reports? Okay. All right, well, with that, enjoy your summer. We'll see you again here next month, and adjourned. Six to five, not quite the biggest.